I'd like to call the order, the meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for November 7th, 2018.
Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy, Frost?
Here.
Natoli and Peters?
Here.
You have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, November 11th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium and please silence your electronic devices.
Would everyone stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, call your first item, please.
Item one is the State of Agriculture in Sacramento County based on the 2017 Crop and Livestock Report.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, well, before I get started, I just want to take a second to recognize the part of my crop report team that is here, Kevin Martin and Laura McCready, and Chris Flores also worked on it, but she's at a training today out of county. So I just want to recognize them for their hard work.
I'll come here.
And Laura's been doing this for a long time. So Laura gets our statistics and works with our growers, and Kevin does a lot of the design and puts the actual publication together. So, anyway, good afternoon, supervisors. I'm Julie Jensen, Sacramento County Agricultural Commissioner, and I'd like to thank the board for allowing me a few minutes to shine a spotlight on an economic driver in Sacramento County that to many who live in the urban culture is not very visible, but it plays a vital role in our county economy. Of course, I'm speaking about our growers and our agricultural community. So this brief update on the state of agriculture is based on the Sacramento County 2017 Crop and Livestock Report that you each received a copy of early last week, and the California Food and Agriculture Code mandates that my department compile this report annually. So this report would not be possible without the contributions of data from so many of our agricultural producers, so I'd also like to thank them for taking the time to respond to our annual questionnaire. They are bombarded with regulatory paperwork, and we appreciate them getting the information to us. So the data collected for this report is used for so many important purposes that are actually to the benefit of our growers. The information that we've gathered here is used by the National Agricultural Statistics Service to compile the statewide California report, and actually, the USDA Farm Bill, Distribution of Funds, is partially determined from that report, so it's very important to our economy. This data is also used by lenders to help determine the health of agricultural economy here in Sacramento County. Now, I always like to start with a look back at the past 10 years to help give us some context. So we were surprised, last year when I came and talked to you, we were surprised that in 2016, even in the fifth and final year of drought, Sacramento County actually had its highest value in agricultural production in history. So it seems logical that in 2017, when we had a fairly wet year, that we would see an increase in our agricultural production value. But actually, this was not the case. We actually saw a decrease in value by 2.2%, which is really not statistically significant, but it was still a little bit of a surprise to us. The value of our agricultural production in 2017 was $495,756,000. Now, this is the farm gate value, so it doesn't reflect the cost that went into production of our commodities, but it also doesn't reflect some of the ancillary economies that are affected by our agriculture, such as processing, transportation, labor, and some of the other crop inputs. Although that wetter-than-average season in 2017 did not result in an increase in our farm gate values, it did provide another critical benefit to Sacramento County because it helped recharge some of our aquifers that had been negatively influenced by our five Recently, our top five commodities have remained stable, with only small changes even in our top 10. For the ninth year in a row, grapes lead the way as number one. Milk remains in the second position, but this year poultry moved up and pushed pears out of the third position, and pears have been pushed down to fourth. So, it's like a race. Leading by a nose, actually, no, grapes pretty much run away with it. Nursery stock remains in the fifth position, indicating that housing and the building industry remained strong in 2017. Okay, so as I mentioned, we did see a slight decrease of 2.2% from 2016 to 17, and like I said, it was a surprise to us because we had more water. There was an inconsistency between our commodities, with just about as many commodities going up as those that went down. So the question is, why are we down overall? And the answer is, well, it's almost the same answer as why we were up in 2016, even in a year of drought. The answer is grapes. When you have so much of your value tied up in one crop, as that crop goes, so goes your economy. In this case, even though our acreage increased by 1,400 acres, both our overall yield and the price were down. So therefore, our grape amount, actually, the loss in grapes actually could cover, that amount could cover the entire loss. Again, we did get a benefit from the increased rainfall because of our aquifers being recharged. So eight out of our 10 top commodities did see increases, with the exception of cattle and calves, and of course, the big one, grapes. An interesting note this year is that cherries moved into the top 10 for the first time in history. And you might say, oh yeah, you're an Aggie. Why is that interesting? The reason it's interesting, well, of course, to an Aggie, it is interesting, but the reason it's interesting is because grapes are, or grapes, cherry production is very weather-dependent. So rains at the wrong time can severely affect your yields by causing splits and rots and making your fruit unmarketable. And 2017 was a wetter-than-average year, so you would think that would be very dangerous to our cherries. But the rains must have been timed just right, because even though we harvested slightly less acres in 2017, our yield per acre was up an amazing 81%. And the price was also up 14%. So what that did is it actually ended up doubling our cherry value for that year. So that's why it's interesting to an Aggie.
If you could pause for a second, Julie, get out of the cherry talk there. Mr. Serna has a question?
Yeah, thank you. And maybe, you may be getting to this here in the balance of your presentation, but while I appreciate some of the rationale behind, the explanation behind the drop in production, overall production from 2016's high, are you and your staff also, as a matter of regular practice, looking and consulting with Department of Conservation, farmland mapping and monitoring?
Yes.
With that unit to see that some of that, or none of it, is attributable to the fact that you have lands that are taken out of ag production, or they're taken from one quality of ag production and put into another quality?
Yes, because if you look at the crop report, one of the things that we show is acres harvested from the year before to the current year, so you can see whether your acreage went up or down. And also, I do have a couple of slides, I'm going to talk about land use in a moment.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Okay, I then have a pie chart that illustrates our crop production, the diversity, and obviously, we don't have quite enough of it. We continue to be dominated by fruit and nut crops, primarily wine grapes. So wine grapes alone account for just over 34% of our total and annual agricultural value. So this dominance of a high-value crop can cause some pretty significant swings in our agricultural economy, to the point where it's almost, as the grapes go, so goes our overall farm gate value. So field crops make up 13% of our total annual ag value, and then animal agriculture, which includes livestock, livestock products, and poultry, make up almost 24% of the total. So the remainder's rounded out by nursery stock, vegetables, aquaculture, seed, and apiary, which are all much smaller. Okay. So last year, when I gave this report, you asked for more land use information. So in the 2017 crop report, we have added transparency overlays at the back. If you look at the back of your crop report, there's-
Very nice.
This is kind of old-school. Transparencies that show our urbanized areas, the various farmland classifications throughout the county, and also our Williamson Act contracts. So I have to give credit to my chief deputy, Chris Flores, and Kevin Martin for coming up with this idea, and we are the first county to include this type of information in our crop report. So we intend to do this, not every year, but every four or five years, so that you'll be able to look back over time and see the changes.
I like those a lot, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
Those are very good.
Yeah, very nicely done.
Good job, Kevin.
That's Kevin. Julie, just on your, on the contracts, the Williamson Act contracts and that overlay, so it shows the non-renewal, is that year-over-year, or is that over that same period of time that you've covered, the 1990 to-
No, I believe this was the year. This was for the year.
So this year, all of those acreages that are shown in the yellow went non-renewal? Basically, they're out of contract now?
Yeah, Chris got these figures for us, so I would have to double-check with her. I can get back to you and let you know on that.
We'll send a report back to the board on that.
That's important, because what it shows is that, you know, certainly in areas that are closer to either urbanizing areas, and, you know, I can pick out just from the map some of those properties, and I'm familiar, obviously, with one or two of them, but if I look at that, that shows a significant trend of not only non-renewal, but, you know, the Williamson contracts, if you did a calculation, I'll bet you that all totaled there is probably, I don't know, a sixth of all the land that's under contract, maybe not quite that much. But I just, I think it's important to know that if those all went, obviously, it's non-renewal, and they've gone out, because you have active non-renewal, which means that they're still, they're counting down. Is that correct?
Right, right.
Non-renewal means that they basically have gone out of contract-
Out.
They're no longer under a conservation contract any longer. And if all that happened in 2018, I think it warrants us taking a look at-
Yeah, I'll check with, I'll check with my chief deputy, Chris Flores, and get back to you on that, because she put those figures together.
Okay, because with the exception of some of the stuff that's held by the conservancies on the eastern flank of the county, and the, you know, predominant portion of the mid-portion of the delta in Sacramento County, because of the state, and I appreciate you showing what the state has, both with Sherman and Twitchell Island, basically, those, they make you show contracts there, but the state has acquired the vast portions of those islands. Just leaves you, the delta, which is actively farmed, and, you know, and farmer-owned, and then you've got the other portion that may be actively farmed or grazed, the eastern flank, but in large part, there's just a few property owners that hold all of that-
Right.
-all of that land. And so it may say something to our legislators about the program, and it may be something that would warrant our attention in the legislative process. Again, being that that's an important part of the fabric and landscape of this county, I would think that we might want to examine this a little closer. Again, nobody's forced into it, it's a voluntary program, but incentives are no longer there, and/or there's other factors, some of them may be in the control of this board and this county, but also, obviously, with, you know, the adoption of HCP, I mean, there's just a whole host of things. And again, when I looked at this chart, it raised some questions that-
Well, let me confirm that data for you.
No, I know, you'll do that.
It would be much more concerning if it is just the year.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, definitely.
Because then I think that trend is, you know, again, they would have had applied 10 years ago to get out, in order to non-renewal in most cases, but nonetheless, if that trend's continuing, then we ought to be tracking what's in, you know, the amount of acreages that are in active non-renewal, then I see all those coming out as well.
Mm-hmm.
Which again, I think-
Right, over time.
-could be, could be almost more worrisome than the loss of farmland, over time. Because I think what it then takes you to is that you would not even potentially lose the farmland, but then the incentive is to stay in farming, the financial ones, as slight as it might be in some cases, basically, that Williamson Act is losing its effect in this county. So, anyway, Julie, if you can, maybe do some follow-up on that.
I will, I will.
Okay, thanks.
So, you know, as you've pointed out, loss of farmland is a concern throughout many parts of California, and Sacramento County is no different. So one of Sacramento County's planners, Tim Cahaya, did a project on the loss of farmland in Sacramento County for a GIS class that he took. Now, his data only went through 2014, and it also didn't include grazing land. So what we did was we added the most recent data, which brought it up to 2016, and we compiled the data for the loss of grazing land and added that in. So the table that you see up here shows the loss of farmland in Sacramento County from 1990 through 2016. So if you look at the lower box there, it's kind of small, but it shows that the vast majority of the loss occurred between 2000 and 2016. So in that 16-year period, so in 2000, we had almost 400,000 acres of ag land, and in that 16 years, we lost 35,418 acres of farmland. Now, that includes grazing land. So that's 8.9% of the total ag land in Sacramento County. And the 10 years before that, 1990 till 2000, we'd only lost, I think it's 3,000-something acres. It's much smaller. So the majority of it was definitely in that latter 16 years.
You could pause for a second. Mr. Serna has a question.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure I understand the language that's used here in this chart. When it says "loss of important farmland," does that mean the actual category, "important farmland," quote-unquote, that's lost to urbanization, or the conversion of important farmland to another ag category, such as unique?
No, no, it's the loss to some use other than agriculture.
Okay.
And it includes the prime farmland, the unique farmland, statewide importance.
Okay, what importance, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Just a second, Mr. Natoli has a question.
Yeah, just a point here, and this came up with our discussions about the HCP a few weeks back, and I think this highlights the reason we need to have a discussion about our general plan policies. A5 is raised by the Farm Bureau, it relates to farmland preservation, because we do have a strategy, but we also allow stacking. And again, I trust we were going to get back to that fairly shortly, I know we're down to the last few meetings of the year, but Nav, I'm kind of looking to you, and certainly, this, I think, is a real important factor, because the HCP is conservation lands, it's not necessarily agriculture. We talk about loss of agricultural lands to development, to wetland creation in some cases. I think it really puts a spotlight on the discussion this board needs to have with the broader communities certainly affected, but, so I guess I just want to emphasize, we need to have that workshop, again, recognize we may not be able to get it in before the end of the calendar year, but I would just say, I think it's something we need to focus on, and I know LeAnn, her folks, have certainly understood some of the questions that come out of that, but we'll want to engage folks in this, particularly as we see some of the bigger projects coming forward that are within the general plan, but nonetheless, will be in the loss of farmland category.
That's correct, we are planning on that.
All right, okay, good, thanks.
Thank you.
So, moving on, the next slide is really just a visual GIS representation of the losses between 1990 and 2014, and this one does exclude the grazing land. So, map's a little bit hard to understand, but the green, the medium green that you see is, actually shows where the actual parcels that were lost. And then the pie charts show both the amount and the quality of the farmland that was lost in various jurisdictions. So actually, 69% of the lost farmland was in the city of Sacramento, primarily in the Natomas area, as you can see on the map, and then also the city of Elk Grove. So then the remaining 31% loss was in the unincorporated parts of the county. So this map was put together by Tim, the planner, and the data that was used to prepare both his report and what we came up with is from the California Department of Conservation, the Division of Land Resource Protection. So, any questions on that map? I know it's a little, there's a lot going on on that map.
Supervisor Frost?
I recently attended a Callavco conference, and I thought this was kind of a timely conversation based on Supervisor Natoli's comments. And some of the other cities and counties are creating some sustainable ag land conservation programs, whereby they're actually putting together some ag land mapping and creating plans for a conservation program, and using cap and trade funds to help finance that. And I wonder if maybe that would be, in a way, it kind of helps the cities and counties, because then, in some cases, if they have a plan in place, then it requires a vote in order to, it's not like that easy to, you know, divert from the plan. And I wonder if we could maybe look into something like that, Nav, where, look at what other cities and counties are doing to preserve their ag land and maybe capitalize on it by getting some more funding, from cap and trade funding.
Okay, we'll look at it.
Ventura County did it, they were working on-
Which county?
Ventura County, worked on green belt agreements and voter initiatives. There were other counties that Ventura, Monterey, Santa Clara, Contra Costa, that worked on farmland mapping and monitoring programs, and basically put together a plan and actually were able to get cap and trade funds for it.
Yeah, absolutely, we'll pursue that.
Go ahead.
Okay. So our department continues to fight the battle of protecting California agriculture, and our first line of defense is excluding the invasive pests from coming in in the first place. So our soldiers in this battle include both humans and canines, as you've seen here in your chambers. The detection dog program has proved itself over and over with many interceptions of invasive pests that would have gotten by our human inspectors, because they were in unmarked parcels, and there was nothing to indicate that there was host material in the parcels. So we did have a world-class canine team with Dozer, with both Dozer and Cairo, but unfortunately, they've both now retired. But we are in the rebuilding phase with two new, young, up-and-coming stars, Yeti and Taz. So Yeti replaced Dozer and came to us in 2017, and that's a picture of her with her handler, Jennifer, oh, and she is just the cutest little thing you ever saw. She's actually called a canoe retriever, she's a Labrador retriever, but she's called a canoe retriever because they're bred small so that they can sit in the canoe when they're out duck hunting back east, and they use, and they can jump out, and they're small.
Isn't it part of your annual report to bring the dogs with you?
No, no. No, these two, they still need some polishing.
No, no, why not? The district attorney brings her comfort dogs over.
So, anyway, then Cairo retired this year and was replaced with Taz. And so, as the names Taz and Yeti might indicate, these are two active youngsters with great enthusiasm, so we're working on polishing them a little bit. The dogs begin working in FedEx and UPS, but it takes them about a year to graduate to the post office. And the reason for this is simple. At most of your parcel handlers, like UPS and FedEx, those guys, the packages can be opened immediately upon the dogs identifying them as a target, and then the dogs receive instant reward if indeed there was a target in the package. So this is not the case at the post office, because first-class letters and parcels are protected by the Fourth Amendment from search and seizure. So in order, when the detection dog keys on a package, we can't just open it and see if there's something in there, we have to actually get permission from either the sender or receiver to open and inspect that package, or we have to get a search warrant. And search warrant right now, another county, Santa Clara, has been working on that, and it's just not really practical right now. So we work on getting permission from either the sender or receiver to open the package. So because the inspectors cannot instantly confirm whether or not the identified package is indeed a target, the dogs don't get instantly rewarded. So this is why dogs that are going to work in the post office, they have to be very well-trained, and they have to have, be very entrenched in their search behavior before they can work at the post office. And also, they can't work there for many days in a row, because like most employees, they're going to stop working eventually if they don't get paid. So our human inspectors are also very effective, and as you can see here, they have also had numerous invasive pest interceptions this past year in these various pathways, air freight, trucks and parcels, and railroads. And they're very well-trained, and they're very sharp-eyed, because many of the pests that they have intercepted are really tiny, and they're very hard to spot in a shipment, a large shipment of plants or produce. The network of detection insect traps throughout the county, those are our second line of defense in keeping invasive pests from becoming established in California. So these traps are used to detect these invasive pests when they get here in small numbers before they have a chance to become established. So the goal is to detect them, if they're here, while their population is still small enough for an eradication program to be effective. In 2017, our detection trappers, which are pictured here at the top of the slide, those are all seasonal employees, along with some of our permanent staff, performed over 91,000 servicings of the various insect traps in Sacramento County. Now, a good example of the success of this program is actually this year. We have an oriental fruit fly population that was detected, then we did delimitation trapping to narrow it down to a small area, and the State Department of Food and Agriculture took over and is running an eradication program and put in place a quarantine to prevent the spread of this pest. So this detection program also serves another purpose. It is also evidence that we're free from infestations of various pests, and that allows us to ship our agricultural commodities to other countries that have quarantines against these agriculturally harmful pests. So we ship commodities all around the world to over 70 other countries, and all of these countries have various quarantines and requirements to protect their agriculture. So our department issues phytosanitary certificates to accompany our agricultural shipments and assure those governments that our shipments do not pose any threat to their agriculture. So they're called phytosanitary certificates, from the Greek, phyto meaning plant, and sanitary meaning clean, so we're certifying that we are shipping clean plant material. So the chart we have here at the bottom of the slide indicates the commodities that account for the greatest amount of shipments. Some of these commodities are grown in surrounding counties but are shipped from here, and the perfect example is almonds. We don't grow nearly that many almonds. All California counties have similar detection programs, similar to ours, that allow our inspectors to certify the shipments with confidence that they are clean. And finally, although this presentation is on the state of agriculture in Sacramento County, there is another side to our department that doesn't get enough recognition for the very important job that is performed. I am not only the agricultural commissioner, I'm also the sealer of weights and measures, and I have the very important responsibility of ensuring that our consumers are receiving what they pay for when they purchase goods. This program touches every citizen in this county, even though there's quite a few of them are not even aware that it exists. Our inspectors are out there checking gas pumps to be sure that you're receiving a gallon when you pay for a gallon. They're also checking scales, meters, and any other measuring devices that are used in commerce. So their diligence and the continued years of an active program have resulted in a 94% compliance rate for devices. One of our newer programs is our automated point-of-sale program, and that's where we check to see that when your items are scanned, you're charged the same price that is listed on the shelf. But in those inspections, 17% of those inspections had overcharges. That indicates that this program is still very valuable to our consumers, as there's still work to be done to raise the compliance rate in this program. So that's really all I have for you today. I hope this presentation has been interesting and informative for you, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if I can.
Yes, Mr. Natoli?
Hey, ma'am, just on that last slide first.
Yes.
So nearly 20% of the products, of the 30,000 products that were sampled, and that'd be about 6,000, whatever, you know, everything from, whatever's on, I guess, on the grocery shelves, and I don't know, all the stores that you go to, that's a pretty high- That's a pretty high percentage. In doing that, were you able to, you know, maybe it's a matter of only a few pennies per transaction, maybe it, you know, equates to dimes or quarters or dollars. I don't know that from just what your bullet point is there. But, I guess, I would say too then, what, you know, what sort of, you know, consequence, if, again, some of that can be, you know, human error, I get that, but either encoding information into it or not changing the codes or changing the prices. But, if you've got nearly 20% of the 30,000, almost 31,000 products that were sampled are showing overcharges, that's, I mean, I don't know how that compares elsewhere and if there's any comparison statewide.
Yeah, I can't tell you that either. But, it's much higher than I'm comfortable with, that's for sure. And we do, you know, we do take enforcement action, so they are fined. We fine within the guidelines that are provided by state regulation. So, if it's, if it's less than a dollar-
Yeah.
-then, the most we can fine them is $100. So, even if they do it every time we go in there.
Okay. Do you give a correction notice? I mean, is there some incentivizing?
We start.
Can you say that, you know, because maybe the cost of doing business, if there's enough transactions, $100 may just be the price of doing business. I mean, you know, if in fact you continue to see that regularly, do you more, do you then increase the frequency of inspections at those locations?
Yes, yes. We do follow-up inspections, kind of interesting. So, we go in and do an inspection, and then, if there is a non-compliance, depending on how many times they've had non-compliances, they might start off with just a warning letter or a notice of violation. And then, we move up as the repeats warrant or as the severity of the overcharge warrants. And then, we follow up with a follow-up inspection. The good thing about that is that they get charged for our time for follow-up inspections. They don't get charged, the original inspection is included in the price of their annual registration, their device registration. But, the follow-up inspections, they have to pay for. And we do those on an hourly basis at our regular rate. And they, we do those for any time there's a non-compliance.
Because that's also one out of five chance, which would be pretty good if you're playing the lottery, that, you know, anytime you buy a product, you know, I guess, this is kind of throughout the county, cities, and incorporated area that you may very well get overcharged.
And it could be for, there are a ton of reasons-
Right.
-that they're wrong. I mean, they either didn't change the price on the, well, one thing, a lot of times, they do the order wrong. They'll change, if the price is going up, you know, they'll change the price on the electronic scanner before they do it on the shelf. Well, that's when you're going to get an overcharge.
Okay.
If it's going up, you always do the shelf first, then the scanner. If it's going down, the opposite. You do the scanner and then the shelf. But, then you also have customers that put things in the wrong place. We have that, that argument comes in quite often. Or, you have stalkers that do it wrong.
Does this also reflect, just one more question. So, when you talk about device compliance, that's a pretty good compliance rate as relates to gas pumps and scales for meat and fish and whatever else is purchased by the pound, you know, other products. That's pretty good device compliance, but in, so the price verification is a separate category. If you had devices that were overcharging or undercharging, that would be in a different category?
Yes.
Devices themselves.
But, that's just, this is just the automated, it's called an automated point-of-sale.
Yeah.
So, it's a lookup program-
Right.
-where it just looks up the price. It's not actually doing a calculation.
Okay. And with your device compliance, is that, have we been pretty steady industry-wide that we're finding the mid-90s?
Yes. For us, we've been pretty consistent. In fact, I think last year, when I gave this report, it was at 94 then too. So, we're fairly consistent on the devices. We just need to get some work, we have some work to do on those scanners.
Okay. Just a couple other quick follow-on questions then. Back to your ag report, certainly want to compliment you on the whole overall layout and the work you went into. It's very readable, but it also, I think, draws your attention to certain aspects by the way you've highlighted them in the report. I wanted to ask about, you mentioned about the certification for overseas and out-of-country shipment, the almonds. And we show, you know, harvested acreage actually went from where it was just included in miscellaneous 2016, now it's actually called out for. And is there a category where you're tracking planted acreage as well? Because I mean, that's both almonds and walnuts.
No, this is just harvested acreage, so not planted.
Okay.
Now, we can, depending on the crop, we can figure out planted acreage from our pesticide enforcement program. If it's a crop that, that needs to use pesticides from the time that it's first planted onward, then we can figure that out because we have all that acreage. But, if it's something, there are some crops that don't really need pesticides in an early stage, and so, that way, we don't have a record of that.
Because a windshield survey, and you know, your folks are out there, would show you that in addition to obviously the additional acres of grapes and, but particularly with the tree crops, the-
Right.
-ammons and walnuts in particular, just, you know, actually replacing vineyards in some cases with those particular commodities.
Well, we'll see what happens with walnuts because the price fell out under that one. So, but the almonds, the nut crops, again, are right along with the grapes as far as being a really high-value crop.
Right.
And so, if you can, you know, I mean, if you're a grower and you can make more money planting something different on your, you know, 40 acres, you're going to plant something that's going to make more money for you.
Last, I would just say, I think it's, it's good, I don't know how, I assume this is on your website in a format that people could download all or portions of it. But, I think the certified farmers markets to show that every day in this community somewhere, at least, you know, there's one farmer's market being conducted, if not several. And I think so the ability, the access to, you know, not to certified farm-grown products, but certainly throughout the community, even with, you know, I think, some of the vendor stands and farm stands and so forth. But, these are actually the farmer's markets. There's pretty good smattering throughout the community, and I think that speaks well, obviously, to not just the farm to fork, but the commodities that are being grown and being brought into the community and the access by the general public to be able to get to those products is, it's grown. That list is pretty significant.
It's nice.
Yep.
We're happy to see it. Yeah, so, even though this is a Sacramento County report, a lot of what we do is also dependent on the counties around us and the commodities that are produced around us.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Julie. I don't see any other questions. Thank you very much for your presentation, and next time, bring the dogs.
Oh, and I would like you to know that they are, these have all been sent out to the libraries, so each library should be receiving a copy fairly soon for their resources.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item two, you are acting as the Board of Supervisors, Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento, and the Sacramento Housing Development Corporation. This is the approval of 2019 Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency budget.
Good afternoon, Chair Peters and members of the board. I am Russ Robertson, the agency's finance director, and this afternoon, I am here to present the agency's 2019 proposed budget. The annual budget is based upon the calendar year, January through December, and incorporates the activities of the Housing Authority of the City of Sacramento, the Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento, as well as federal entitlement funds and local housing funds administered on behalf of the city and county of Sacramento. The 2019 proposed budget is a balanced budget of $192.7 million, which reflects the estimated resources available to fund the projects, programs, and operations of the agency for 2019. As you can see from this chart, 89% of the agency's revenue resources are received from the federal government through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The major federal programs administered by the agency include the Housing Choice Voucher Program, Public Housing, the Public Housing Capital Fund, the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership Program, and the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative Grant. Of the aforementioned programs, the Housing Choice Voucher and the Public Housing Programs make up roughly 70% of the overall agency budget. Additionally, over the past several years, the agency has also assumed responsibility of the Shelter Plus Care Program, Emergency Solution Grant, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS for the Sacramento County's Department of Human Assistance. The remaining 11% of the agency's resources come from local miscellaneous housing, housing trust funds, and housing successor funds from the former redevelopment agencies of the city and the county. With such a large portion of the agency's budget dependent upon federal funding, it is imperative that we stay abreast of federal legislation. This slide represents the proposed appropriations for 2019. As shown, 52% of the agency's budget is dedicated for housing assistance payments under the Housing Choice Voucher and Shelter Plus Care Programs. 20% is for capital projects. 14% is for salaries and benefits. 9% for service and supplies. And the remaining 4% is for public service programs, debt service, and financial transactions. This slide provides a multi-year budget comparison. Different line items presented here through the previous four years and this current proposed with the variance at the end. The 2019 budget represents a modest $2 million or 1.1% increase in net appropriations compared with the 2018 adopted budget. The next two slides briefly retouched on the agency's two largest revenue streams, the HCV and the public housing programs. As mentioned earlier, the two together make up 70% of the 2019 proposed budget. The first chart on this slide shows six years of historical and two years of estimated leasing statistics for the HCV program, which is the largest program administered by the agency, and makes up 58% of the budget. The HCV program provides rental assistance to program participants throughout the city and county of Sacramento. The Housing Authority has approximately 12,400 vouchers authorized for leasing each month by HUD. The second chart reflects the same period of time of estimated revenues, expenses, and reserves for the Housing Assistant Payments, or the HAP program. The agency's public housing program-
I'm sorry. You got ahead of me there. Mr. Kennedy has a question.
Oh, sorry.
Back up your slide.
Yeah, there we go.
So, lease-up percentage, what's that mean? I mean, I think I know, but what exactly does that mean?
I will do my best to answer. It's the percentage of total vouchers we have available and that are used by participants through each month.
So, in other words, 9% are going unused?
It's a, I'll have LaChelle explain a little bit.
It's never as simple as it should be.
It's a calculation, but yes, I'll have LaChelle.
So, it's not that 9% are going unused, it's that of the total number, 90, which percentage?
91%.
91%.
91%.
Can't see that well. 91% are being used, but it's really more the budget authority that we have. And you'll notice that what we're seeing is because there are a lot of increases in terms of rent that our landlords are charging, we're actually expending all of the money, but we don't actually use all of the vouchers. So, it's either, are you using 100% of your money, or are you using 100% of your vouchers? Does that make sense?
It does. So, what do you think that the drop from 99 to 91% is due to?
It is definitely due to the fact that we have a higher housing cost-
Yeah.
...and that our landlords are charging more. So, when they charge more, they come in for rent increases that we approve. So, then, we end up using more of our funds.
Got it. Thank you.
Up to the next slide. The agency's public housing program administers units located throughout the city and county of Sacramento. The units consist of various property types from high-rise apartments to single-family homes. Program revenues are generated from tenant rent collections and operating subsidies provided by HUD. The agency received approximately 93% subsidy preparation since August of 2017. The slight decline projected in 2019 is based upon a combination of federal budget projections and the loss of a subsidy that we will be getting less of during the construction of the Twin Rivers project that we have going. The second chart here reflects public housing capital funds, which is the money used to improve and maintain the public housing inventory that we have. The CFP experienced an unexpected 50% increase in funding last year. 2019 funding for this, this fund is not expected to remain at the same levels as last year and should be more in line with 2017 levels. This concludes my portion of the presentation, and I'll now turn it over to the Executive Director, LaChelle Dozier, for the remaining part of this presentation.
Good afternoon. LaChelle Dozier, Executive Director for Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. So, I just wanted to kind of give a brief overview and kind of put the kind of state of housing in context of where we are at the federal, state, and local level, and then talk briefly about some of our accomplishments and then be available for questions. So, today is the day after, so a lot of things happened across the nation in terms of what's going on at the federal level, which will definitely have an impact on what is going to be occurring for us. The federal budget was not approved, and we are under a continuing resolution until December 7th. We anticipate that that is going to continue into next year, which is not uncommon. So, we still have yet to get a final federal budget. So, as you can also see, there's been a lot of changes going on at the federal level. There's been a lot of great discussions happening about the state of housing across the nation. And so, we're starting to see the impact of some of those things. One of them is our National Housing Trust Fund. The National Housing Trust Fund is something that I would say they've been working on for almost a decade. And finally, we started to see some of those funds flow to our area. So, in 2016, the National Housing Trust Fund, what that equated to for California in terms of the appropriations that were received in 2016 was 10 million. In 2017, we saw 23 million. And then, in 2018, it's $36 million, and we anticipate that will continue to grow. So, we're very glad that we are starting to see some of those federal resources finally come down to our level. In addition, there is a lot of discussion and talk about other favorable initiatives that we are watching and currently making sure that we stay on top of and track. One is the American Housing and Economic Mobility Act that's being proposed by U.S. Senator Elizabeth Warren. She introduced this legislation, and it was really to really address a lot of the burdens that we have for renters and buyers. So, some of the things that are included in that is increasing our federal funding for building and rehabilitating new housing to 3.2 million housing units. And this is really going to really try to work on bringing down the rents for our lower class and middle-income families by 10% in our urban, suburban, and rural areas. This act also does talk about putting $10 billion into new competitive grant programs that we can use for infrastructure, parks, roads, and school, as long as local governments really work on their land-use rules and make sure that they are being supportive of affordable housing in their communities. There's also down payment assistance grants for first-time home buyers, and also investing $2 billion to support borrowers, borrowers whose wealth was destroyed in the financial crisis. So, that is one of the things that we're looking at very closely to see exactly, you know, how that will pan out. But, it could include a lot of resources that come to us. In addition, HUD has also been very sensitive to the fact that we talk about vouchers and how vouchers can be used out there on the private rental market. And as we know, our voucher holders have a hard time sometimes getting landlords to accept them. So, HUD is really putting together a landlord task force that really is going to start going around the country and do, get ideas about landlord engagement and how we can really make some of those policy shifts in the program that will make the program easier and more accessible so that landlords will really want to participate. And this is something, obviously, is a big deal for us here in Sacramento. So, then, when we look to our next one, the state of housing in Sacramento, as you know, our affordable housing production obviously has decreased over the past several years after the housing crisis and then the elimination of redevelopment. So, we all have been working very hard in terms of how we really get back to increasing our supply. So, we're continually- So, we're continually looking at our federal entitlement funding, such as CDBG, our home investment program, and then also making sure that we're competitive for state funding. So, we really strive to make sure that we use those resources and that there are quite a few state resources that have become available. Last year, there were several bills that were...that the governor signed regarding housing, and this year, additional bills also came that really deal with regulatory barriers and all things related to that. In addition, actually, some of the funding has become available. So, as you are all aware, the governor signed SB 850, which allocated $553 million in new state funding for two programs, the Heap and the Cash, which there was a lot of discussion in terms of homeless funding, so we're very excited about those. But one of the things I think that we really have to be very aware of is that in order to maximize state resources, we really need to make sure that we're leveraging whatever we have at the local level. Last night, Propositions 1 and 2 both passed. Those are going to provide more federal...more state housing funds, but the way that you can compete effectively is that you bring dollars to the table. They're looking for leverage. So, any opportunities that we have to create those funding sources and to make sure that we're using them, that is usually what gives you more points and gives you much more leverage in terms of being competitive for those funds, and the majority of those funds that were approved are going to be competitive applications. So, our next one, as we were talking about implementing our housing policy and programs, I really wanted to just kind of focus so that you can see about the annual amount that we have for housing here within the county. So, as you know, we administer all of the county's housing ordinance, the cities...the mixed income ordinance and the affordable housing ordinance to ensure that they are meeting all of our required affordable housing obligations. We also administer and work very, very closely with the county on the new No Place Like Home program. So, between our home, our Housing Trust Fund, our affordable housing, and CDBG, it's about $6 million is what we're looking at on an annual basis. So, we're very interested to see, and as requested, we'll be back at the beginning of the quarter to really talk about the impact that these new programs will have in terms of the dollars we have necessary to create affordable housing. So, the bottom line is that we really need to make sure that we're very aggressive, that we're positioning ourselves very well for any of those new funding opportunities that become available. So, just a quick highlight on some of the things that have been funded. In terms of federal programs, it's about $7.1 million, and it says CDBG, but that does include also our emergency shelter grant as well. The county had in terms of funding for 2019, we were able to provide 1,600 individuals with homeless and housing assistance, our emergency repair program, 115-plus families. We also worked very closely with our shelters and provided over 56,000 bed nights. And then our Meals on Wheels program that we cooperate with the city, the county, as well as our other jurisdictions, were able to serve over 350,000 meals to 3,800 seniors who participate in it.
Before you leave that slide, back to the CDBG money. That's a total for the city and the county, correct?
No, those are the funds that come to the county.
Just the county?
Mm-hmm. It's the CDBG as well as the ESG, the Emergency Solutions Grant.
Okay, and so what...you know, what is one and one and the other? Separate them out for me.
$6.7 million goes to the CDBG, and about $460,000 is for our Emergency Solutions Grant. So, the bulk of those funds are CDBG funds.
Okay, and when do you come to members of the board to discuss the CDBG, you know, what projects you propose? I guess there should probably...I mean, I would like to have a meeting with you in advance to talk about what projects I might want to fund with that. So, how does that going to work out? What's the timing?
So, that's twice a year, we're in front of the board, so we come with the one-year action plan, which we just approved...two weeks ago? Two weeks ago? About two weeks ago, and that really sets the funding for 2019. And then we'll come around mid-year, because we do a mid-year update to see if there's additional funds available, and so twice a year is when you'll see that. However, we are working very closely with the county to put together an entire schedule of when we'll start the discussion, start working with the county, start working with all of the supervisors in terms of projects within their district as well, so that those roll into the action plan.
So, that schedule would work out, so we would actually have time to discuss them, not the day before the hearing?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, Chair Peters, as LaChelle mentioned, we are in the process, and it was mentioned briefly in the report that came to you two weeks ago on the action plan, putting together a schedule for the preparation of next year's plan, and we'll be happy as we put that together to provide it to your offices for information, so you'll know what's coming and when in that process.
And plenty of time for us to say, hey, I might like to do this project that you don't know about-
Correct.
...and have time for it to be vetted and possibly make it into the budget.
Yes, absolutely. That was the purpose of us putting together that.
Schedule.
Okay.
Supervisor Kennedy has a question.
Yeah. The $7,165,808, how does that compare to this year?
Excuse me? I'm sorry.
How does that...the funding for 2019, how does it compare to 2018?
It's about the same.
About the same?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. It's about the same.
Okay.
Okay. So, our next one actually deals with a portion of the CDBG funding, which is the infrastructure projects. So, $444,000 we used to work on projects within the districts. You'll see, we were able to do Bellevue Park, the parking lot at McComber, and Old Florentine Park. So, those are just examples of how those funds were used within the community for infrastructure and public facilities. And then our housing finance and policy. We committed $6.5 million in multifamily loan assistance and approved issuance of $12 million. That gives us a total of $18.5 million that we committed to the projects in the county, and there's two projects that we worked on, Southland Court Apartments and Courtyard Inn, a total of 182 units between the two. Each year, we accept applications three times a year, so in January, August, and October if we have funding. So, we did notice that at the last time when we accepted projects for funding, we had more applications available than funding, and we anticipate in our next application round that that is also going to continue. So, we are in a situation where we do have a lot of affordable housing developers who are ready and willing and able to do affordable housing, who have good projects that can come out of the ground, but for funding. So, if our funding can increase, we really can start to increase the pipeline of affordable housing within the county. It's not for a lack of people out there or developers who are sitting on the sidelines. They're very interested in doing these projects, but they're looking at how much gap financing is available. So, the more that we can look at ways to increase the gap financing that we have available, the more affordable housing that we can do.
So, when you say the more that we look at that gap financing, does that mean you're bringing something to the board supervisors to discuss it, or are you working with our staff to...at the legislature? How does that discussion look?
Right. Well, part of that is about the discussion that we want to have in the first quarter as we start talking about the funding that's coming from the Proposition 1, Proposition 2, and then already approved is another SB 2 funds, and those are funds that we know are definitely going to be coming to the county as a direct allocation. So, that's something that we do want to bring back and have that discussion. There is another area I think that really needs to be discussed, and that is really looking at some of the fees that we charge. And if you take a look at one of the fees that we charge, the County Housing Trust Fund, we set that in 1990, and it hasn't adjusted since that time. So, last year, we collected in 2017 $176,000, whereas if we really looked at changing that amount, or at least tying it to something that increased with even a cost of living or some adjustment, those funds could go up. But it hasn't been touched since 1990, which is very different than our inclusionary housing fee. Remember, when we put that in place, and that was when we moved to a fee-based program for inclusionary housing, that one actually does have an automatic adjustment factor. So, when you look at the county affordable housing under that particular program, in 2017, we collected $1.1 million. So, it just goes to show you the different order of magnitude. So, there are some things that we can do internally that can make some of those changes, and the others are about how we advocate for that funding from the federal and the state level.
Okay. Thank you.
So, homeless opportunities. So, last year was our first full year of really working on the plan that we had to house 1,755 families through our three-year strategy. We really were able to focus and really look at how we can allocate more project-based vouchers, which we did increase it from our original strategy. So, 433 units were allocated through that. 258 homeless families were actually housed, and of the total allocation, we still have some that are in the pipeline, 175 in terms of new construction that we'll be looking at. So, we're very glad that we're able to move forward on that particular strategy, and this is where we are as of the first year. Then just a couple of more slides. Improvements and efficiencies in terms of the agency, what we're looking at is really focusing on improving our customer service. We're looking at using technology to really change how we interact with the public at our call center, and looking at some really innovative changes that'll do more of a callback versus people sitting and waiting on the line for a long period of time to get answers. We also were able to implement our online rental payment tools for our public housing residents, so now they can pay their rent online. Our website totally redesigned and really features and looks at a lot of the things that are going on with the agency and doesn't update and profiles information for our residents. And then we've also really aggressively expanded our communication through social media platforms, through videos, so that people really understand the programs that we have available so that they can take advantage of them. And then our last one, as we look forward, the big initiatives and things that we will be working on, obviously, is our Twin Rivers redevelopment project. As you may be aware, depending on which way you come into town, most of it has been demolished. If you're coming down 12th Street, it probably looks the same, but if you come down Richards, you notice that the majority of it is just absolutely gone. So, it's pretty stark. So, our first phase, we have been able to relocate all of the families, and we're now working on relocation for the second phase. Once we finish that, then we will be moving into our infrastructure work that has to occur. We have received all of the funds necessary to do the infrastructure work, but in addition to that, we are aggressively going after additional funds. We applied for a TCC, Transformative Climate Communities Grant, and this is working very closely with RT in terms of that multimodal station that we want to put on the land that we own in the Triangle area. So, we actually received today notice that they will be...we've kind of passed the first hurdle after our grant application. They're coming out for a site visit, so that's about $23 million grant that we are pursuing. In addition to that, we talked a lot about the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, and this is our major transformation for public housing, and this is probably the biggest thing that's happened in public housing in the last several decades that really gives us an opportunity to use public and private partnerships to infuse money into that portfolio. As we know, this is another situation where we're receiving far less dollars than we needed to keep our public housing to the standards necessary, so we're going to be moving very aggressively and getting that application into HUD so that we can reserve our place in line for a limited number of units that they will allow for conversion. In addition, we continue to work on the Promised Zone. To date, we have $118 million that has been leveraged through Promised Zone activities, and that's directly ones that we've been involved with or working with partners within the Promised Zone. And now, we're looking forward to and doing a lot of work and seeing exactly how they're going to roll out Opportunity Zones. So, that overlays with a lot of our disadvantaged communities. There's huge opportunities, but people obviously are trying to figure it out because it's very new, and the regulations just came out, so we're very excited to see what opportunities that will also bring for our area. With that, I am available for any questions you have.
We have a few questions. Supervisor Kennedy?
Promised Zone, how long is that status active?
It is a 10-year initiative-
10 years, okay.
...and we are in year three.
Three? Yeah.
Year three.
That's about right, yeah.
Yes, year three of 10. And it does seem to be something that even with the new administration, that...
I was just going to ask that, yeah.
Is it going to survive? Where there has been support, and the Promised Zone partners that we all work with have really worked very aggressively so that the administration sees the benefit that has been-
So, what if the administration woke up the next day and did something irrational, which I know is a crazy idea, but...and decided not to be interested in it anymore? Are we guaranteed 10 years or no? Or is it funded annually?
It's not funded annually because they don't bring any funding to the table. Oh, but...oh, we actually got them to sign a contract. How about that?
Okay.
So, that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Mr. Natale?
Thanks, ma'am, Chair. Couple of items related. You touched on that you're going to be bringing us after the first of the year, discussion regarding the opportunities presented in the bond measures and how that may play itself out. I would just like to, as a part of that presentation, I know I've talked with our county staff about this, I think I've chatted with you briefly about it, but opportunities where the county may have land, particularly at Mather, as it relates to veterans' housing and some of those opportunities where we already have a fairly robust network of services around the Mather Community Campus and certainly with Mather Hospital and some of the things that are going on with other partners, job training and other supportive services. So, I would hope, LaChelle, that between now and then, and again, if I can help facilitate that, I certainly will be, you know, off my, you know, time to do so, to have a, you know, a discussion around that and to, again, who partners might be and, you know, what the opportunities are, and again, if there was the availability of land, how that might translate into us, you know, getting, you know, early in line for some of those dollars.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We'll definitely take a look.
And the other thing, again, on a related note, but one where, again, I compliment the agency for their efforts, was when the census was done in the 2010 timeframe and that information came out, it was sorely lacking when it came to some of the rural communities, and certainly not just here in Sacramento County, but elsewhere in the United States. But we had to take this upon ourselves, the agency did, after about three years of diligent effort in making the appropriate appeals and actually having a consultant assist SHRE staff and vice versa, we were able to get the redesignation as a block eligible for the delta portion of this county. I guess my point being here, and maybe for those who are working on the census through the exec's office, that we be sure, however we coordinate this, that we maybe can head off some of that by doing the work that would be the basis for not having us be found because of the way statistics fall out and statistical averaging and so forth, so that we could, again, maintain the continuity of at least being eligible within the framework of the funds that we get to compete in those delta communities, because we were absent that, I guess, four years, we're back in, but it'll be...I would anticipate a similar result if we aren't able to bring some focus. So, I don't know, you have our census folks, I know Judy and others are working on that upstairs, but it's a particular point, and it's important to the rural areas, particularly those that have, you know, already qualifying because of either income levels or other infrastructure deficiencies, and I would just hope to avoid that going into the next decade. Otherwise, we'll be back out and we'll be, you know, be another three or four years, spend a lot of money doing that in order to requalify that portion, geographic portion of the county. So, if it's something we can do with our census approach this time around that would be provide that clarification from the get-go, it might put us in a better position. So, and I know you have lots of-
We are working on that.
Yeah, in fact, the county staff has reached out to me and has asked me to sit on the steering committee for the census.
Great.
So, we...and that was the first thing that came to mind, is we don't want to do-
No.
...what it took us to do last time.
Well, thanks to Nav and to you both, so, okay. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. I had one comment. Going forward, in the future, let me just pause and say, I think you know how many boards we all sit on and how many budgets we see, and I think it'd be very helpful if in the future we could get an opinion letter from our chief fiscal officer to go with your budget. So, I don't know what...how long in advance you would need to get that done in order to make your presentation on a timely basis, but I'm not su...it's a big- not su, it's a big budget and, you know, we spend weeks on our county budget and get very little view into this budget until it arrives. And I think it'd help us all understand your budget better and give us an opportunity to learn more.
Yeah. Well, some of the things that we also do in addition is that we spend a lot of time at the commission level on our budget. In fact, we do four presentations on the budget at the commission level. So we break down every single department and do a separate budget presentation and then do a, kind of a culmination of that. So we start off at the beginning with an overview, we break it down into all the departments, and then we do the final. So all of those are seen in a lot of detail by your commissioners and then it comes on over to you before that time. In addition, we also apply and have received an outstanding award for our budget in the past two years and then our CAFR for the past 22 years, I believe it is.
Yeah, I saw a copy of it in the report, your report. I still think it'd be helpful.
We'll work with LaShelle on the time and make sure that Brett's involved in it.
Okay, thank you. We have to conduct a public hearing for this, so I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this item? I see no one. I'll close the public hearing and look for a motion.
I move a staff recommendation, including adoption of the 2019 budget.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, for item number three, if there's anyone here wishing to address the board, I do need to take your oath.
So please stand. Raise your right hand.
Thank you. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth, so help you God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm? When you get to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn. For item number three, this is the North Vineyard Plaza, a request for a general plan amendment, North Vineyard Station specific plan amendment, rezone, tentative parcel map, use permit to allow a 24-hour automobile service station, 24-hour convenience store, and canopy height of approximately 26 feet 6 inches, and a design review for an automobile service station, convenience store, drive-through restaurant, and car wash. Four property located at the northeast corner of Bradshaw Road and Gerber Road in the Vineyard Community. The environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Good afternoon, members of the board. LeAnn Moffett, your planning director. I will have a PowerPoint on this item, but before I start this item, I did want to point out, we have two back-to-back planning items. This is a general planned round. This always gets a little confusing. So Krista Whitman and Flo and I are prepared to walk you through that, but we will have one general plan resolution at the end of the two items. So I will be stepping you through how to handle the staff recommendations on each of the items leading up to that resolution at the end of the two.
So you don't want us to approve a staff recommendation on the general plan?
Right. Until the second item is heard. So
Okay.
So we're all prepared to walk you through which staff actions you'll be taking at the end of each. All right. So starting off with the presentation here on North Vineyard Plaza, the location is at the northeast corner of Bradshaw Road and Gerber Road in the Vineyard Community. The overall site is 7.73 acres. The request is for a general plan amendment, an amendment to the North Vineyard Station specific plan, a rezone, a tentative parcel map, a use permit, design review, and there will be an accompanying request for a PCN finding for alcohol at the convenience store, which is the subject of the use permit. However, because you're not approving the use permit until the subsequent hearing in December, we will cover the PCN item then. Here is a overview on the left with an aerial of the project site at the northeast corner and then a visual of the project site, which is currently undeveloped. The land use designation changes include the general plan amendment on the upper left. A portion of the site is already shown on the general plan for commercial. So in this case, they only, we only need to change the general plan for 4.41 acres. There's also an amendment to the North Vineyard Station specific plan because, again, the site is partially residential and partially commercial. So they would also be amending the community plan to go to commercial. And then a rezone for the entire site from AR-10 to general commercial for the entire 7.73 acres. Here is a site plan. So ultimately, they do plan to do more than one commercial activity on the site, so they are parceling it out to do multiple commercial pads. The item that is the subject of the use permit today is the corner property, this parcel one here, that's the 1.6 acres. That's where they want to put a gas station and convenience store, but they are creating these other parcels of various sizes to do future commercial.
If you could pause for a moment, Mr. Natale?
Thank you, Ma'am Chair. LeAnn, while you have that exhibit up, and I know you'll uncover some of this later in your, in your report, but it was included in ours, and I want to be clear that the, obviously parcel one's the one that's under the application for the full entitlement here. So in looking for the entirety of the parcel to be zone general commercial and recognizing some of the comments from, that were given at the Vineyard Advisory Council regarding proximity to AR-10 property, where does the condition come into play that with an interface between an agres property that may ultimately, you know, have different zoning, but right now it's in that use, it's residential, where does the requirement for a block wall fall in this? Because you've got this carve-out site, it'll be the only thing there, at least initially, unless the Senator has other tenants that they're coming through to develop. And so where does it fall upon the responsibility at what juncture of development that site? And I guess my question is, could we require that wall to go in even though it may be have vacant area behind the service station that's proposed, you're assuming that's approved, that the boundaries, the eastern boundary of the property and the northern, which conforms, I guess, to the drainage there, to have that wall installed at the time? Or what triggers that? Even does it go in with the last phase of a development? And my question is specifically, because you've got six parcels here, which parcel gets to build that even though it may be in common ownership now?
So the requirement for a masonry wall between the commercial and the residential is a development standard of the zoning code.
Yes.
And I think we would typically trigger that when each, when the parcel that is immediately adjacent to the residential comes in for its development. So if they didn't develop these perimeter parcels, then I don't think the development of the gas station would actually trigger construction of the masonry wall unless we made that a specific condition now.
Okay. Well, and again, I'm exploring this because, you know, that's a very choppy approach to doing it. You create six parcels, the valuation, obviously, there goes up because you go from what's existing, obviously, community plan proviso is, the staff is recommending for, but you go to general commercial. And to say then that, you know, because that may not be the ultimate figure, the parcel configuration is what's being proposed right now, but depending upon what users and tenants come in there, and to say that, okay, when parcel five came in, they built a part of the wall, and then maybe parcel two would build another part of the wall, and then the bigger piece behind there, I guess, is parcel six, they're going to, that, you know, strings that out over a period of potentially years, even though you have common ownership, maybe common development. I want to have some conversation around that. I recognize the service station wouldn't, you know, abut any of those, but basically it avoids being a participant in that. And I think for the continuity sake, particularly what's being asked here with general commercial, it's one thing, and we'll get into this about the, you know, the logical segments on the roadways and the waivers being asked for on that, but as relates to that parcel, and they have this kind of choppy approach that could occur over a matter of several years, concerns me. And as I was looking at this, particularly as I was looking at this parcel map, and I know I read with a project representative a couple of weeks ago, but as I look at this, I guess I assume that there'd be kind of a coordinated development. In this case, it could be very choppy.
Yes. So depending where you are at the end of the meeting, one item that you're acting on today is the general plan amendment. We would be continuing the rezone and the use permit to the December hearing.
Okay.
So if the end of today's hearing, your board wants us to look at other conditions, we could do that in the intervening time. We would have to do it fairly quickly, but we could, there is still an opportunity to come back with final materials.
Well, I think it goes to some of the interface conflicts. You know, people may not want to have that next to them and, you know, people can speak up at this hearing and have in the past, but it, you know, but to, I think, kind of perfect that interface with the appropriate, you know, barrier that separates commercial uses from other uses, might be higher density residential over time, but certainly the AR-10 and the home that's there. I think we need to consider that because then, then basically you perfect that, you put it in place, and then as development occurs, those parcel lines may move around or whatever, but then you basically have put it in place from the get-go versus, you know, putting, basically putting most of it on parcel six, as you have outlined. So, all right, thanks.
Okay. Okay, so as I mentioned, they are asking for a use permit for a automobile service station to be operated on a 24-hour basis at the immediate corner in Lot 1. They're also asking for a 24-hour convenience store and for a taller canopy height. We have also looked at the design review of these, and this exhibit shows the elevations of all four sides for the project. The convenience store, it also has a drive-through, a car wash, trash enclosures, fencing around that, and the island canopies. The design review also includes signage. And I do want to note that on this particular exhibit, this is about the signs. They did modify some of the building on the back. So like here in this exhibit, you see that that looks blank. That's actually not the approved elevation. The approved elevation is on the prior slide. This was a prior iteration that is on signs only. And so that is going to be reflected in the final exhibits.
How much is the deviation in the canopy height?
That's the prior slide. They are asking for taller canopy height. They're asking it to go to 26 feet. And I think it is actually fairly common for the current standard gas stations, you are seeing the canopy heights higher than you used to. That's fairly normal.
Our code still makes, means the maximum is 18 and a half.
Yeah, our code still speaks to the smaller footprint gas stations without all the convenience store and all that kind of stuff. So.
Okay, thanks.
So some of the key points, the northern boundary of this site is Gerber Creek, and you did see that there was a sort of bend in the property boundary where water resources has already acquired land for drainage. The entire site is to be commercial with six lots. I've already talked about Phase 1. There is an existing home on Lot 3 that will have to be removed in order to accommodate onsite drainage for the initial development to move forward. I've referenced that we will be returning with a discussion on the PCN, with a hearing on the PCN for alcohol at the December 11th hearing. And you may hear testimony, but initially they were, the applicant was asking for alcohol sales to go past 10:00 PM. They are dropping that request. We do have a mitigated negative declaration and a MMRP with this. I did want to stop and talk a little bit about some of the conditions. Supervisor Natale, you alluded to the staff report discussion on the logical segment analysis. There's a pretty good write-up of that on page five. We do have staff of DOT, Matt Darrow here, if we need to go into any details. But essentially, in summary, the conditions typically of the logical segment requirement of the North Vineyard Station specific plan would require the applicant to do both onsite and off-site road improvements on two roads on both frontages. Because of the cost of that, DOT is prepared to agree for them to pay fees instead and to do a waiver of that full logical segment. And so that is what's currently in the conditions in the package in front of you. So we wanted to point that out in case you have questions about that or want to consider that. Any questions on that?
Yeah, if I could, yeah, on that specifically, and I'm glad Matt's here. And I've seen communication, not related to this application, but in recent days, others who were inquiring about smaller sites within the plan area and, again, this trigger condition that's there. So when we say pay the North Vineyard Station specific plan fees, is that, is there a surcharge to that? Is there, do they, for having the avoidance of having to build long stretches, recognizing, you know, certainly the size of the site being seven acres and with frontage on two, you know, major roadways within the plan area, I get it, that's to be a heavy cost to do this, but is it, so they just pay what the fees they'd pay anyway? Or is there some?
Matt Darrow with DOT is indicating that there's not a surcharge. It's just the fees, the basic fees.
If I could, maybe Matt, if you wouldn't mind, come on. I want to ask about this then because one of the things, I think that, again, you're familiar, obviously, when I referenced a moment ago from an inquiry from another property owner, you may get them from time to time or very frequently now because that's been a
Quite frequently.
fairly big holdup for projects that, you know, get to those thresholds and then they're told, guess what, you know, either you trigger a logical segment under the plan itself and/or you've gotten to the threshold under the unit count for residential, and then guess what, you got to build, you know, $15 million, and, I mean, use my number here, in infrastructure and
Right.
you'll get paid back over the next 20 years, but for a lot of small developers, that's not, they're not able to do that. I guess my question here, though, so they just pay the fees, which obviously, you know, would go to the commercial aspects, but what does that mean relative to delays in those, what were contemplated as being logical segments when we went through that plan?
Right.
Because if they don't, and I'm not looking to necessarily have a surcharge, but I ask it that way is because then you're always playing catch-up. We're still paying off on agreements where folks did improvements, you know, five, 10, two years ago or underway. And so then your bank gets depleted, and I know you folks watch this closely. And so things that would happen in this neck of the woods as relates to this plan area may get delayed for years under the fee strategy because if you're only taking fees on some of these, then other things in your priority schedule of signalization, of road widens, of sidewalks, of pedestrian improvements. And so has the department, I guess this is my question, has the department looked at, and I know we haven't got all those plans synced up yet, and that's been an effort that I'm certainly anticipating us seeing as a board, but of some way at least to get, continue the flow of dollars that would allow us to do some of these projects that aren't getting done and that, you know, the triggers get bypassed. And so then you wait for this accumulation of money, but the accumulation of money may not come because either you have other priorities within the plan area and/or you're paying back developers who either get credits and/or dollars. So we're chasing it. And hopefully I'm explaining that right, but so I guess, what's the thought of the department on this?
Well, you know, it's kind of a bigger, bigger answer than what's the answer. But the reason these are set up, as you well know,
Yes.
is to get around the whole sawtooth issue that occurred. North Vineyard Station went first. We put together this, this, this plan and the idea would be the first person to come in and touch develops that. The money would be in the financing plan for, like you said, reimbursement or credits or what have you. But for the most part, we're finding only the bigger players are able to carry that. When Florin Vineyard Community Plan, which was subsequent plan to this one, came in, we decided to make smaller bites at that, closer to quarter-mile segments versus this being about a half a mile. And in this particular, you know, case, we've got a corner, so he's got two roads and he was first.
Yes, I said, he has Bradshaw, Gerber, six lane roads.
Right. But, but you're, I just am going to basically echo what you said, is that you're going to play catch-up. When you let people have these exceptions, while it makes sense why they're asking because they can't carry this, we are going to eventually play catch-up. The idea would be that eventually the money will be in the plan and somebody will have to go out and complete that. Now, what we'll do as a department is the next person that comes in and fronts that logical segment will be asked to do their frontage. But that doesn't get you the logical segment. But that doesn't get you the logical segment. There's question if you can legally have that second person that touches the logical segment, complete the logical segment. And I'm not sure that the answer is yes.
Because we're finally starting to see some activity beyond, you know, coming out of the recession here. And yes, I'm concerned that this board really hasn't had any significant look at, not only the plan, because we haven't seen that, all that work that's going on that has been presented to us, trying to sync up the three plan areas and, you know, different allocation of costs and projects and so forth and timing. But I guess I would, you know, to the point you made, it's in the staff report, is that never to return to this sawtooth approach that just frustrates the heck out of, you know, existing residents and users of those roads and does nothing but convey the message to folks that who in the heck is doing the planning? And whether it's this body or whatever. But you allow this unbelievable in-and-out with white barricades and unused pavement and that connects to nothing. And that was, you know, the basis for this discussion 20-some years ago, recognizing that that's the last time we really had any substantive discussion around, except for with fees. So again, my point being that this is before us. And, you know, this project's not going to solve all that. But it's timely. And again, you know, certainly Susan and I have sat here long enough that we've had that discussion going back into the early parts of the 2000s. But all my colleagues on this board, who again are concerned about logical development, certainly not burdening, you know, smaller projects to the point that they can't come out of the ground. But also making sure that we address that. And so from a staff perspective, this links up with, it gets it to the bridge on the north side. It stops at the property line on the eastern boundary. But the bigger part of my question was is that if not the improvement, the avoided costs, obviously, that would make this project probably infeasible, at least today, there's a delta in there.
It's a catch-22 for staff, absolutely.
Yeah, and so my question being that if we're going to allow projects to get the waiver, recognizing the circumstances, is that nothing else, again, not to further burden projects, but otherwise, we're going to chase this for years. And I can tell, you know, much as I'm sitting here today would believe that at some point in time, we're going to have the Vineyard CPAC and other residents coming to us and saying, where's the improvement? Your plan said that you were going to do this. Well, we're going to get there, when we get there, when we get enough money. And that's the old line of explanation. And I don't think that works. It doesn't work today, didn't work then. And that was why we had logical segments. And you're right, the next person, next party in is going to be in here saying, well, you didn't make them do it, so how come I gotta do it? And we won't have money to back it up to. So part of that needs to be a thinking, I think, that says, we'll bring some money to the table. If we give a waiver to that condition, that you're still going to have to put some money on the table, recognizing you're not going to have to enter into reimbursement agreement. But, you know, you're part of your, you may get some of that back or a fair share or whatever. But I'm not feeling real comfortable with the overall approach, I guess, Matt. That's what I'm saying, not so much about what's before us. And so maybe you can offer some remedies to me and this board that, you know, I don't know if that's a concern to share. But it's, I never wanted to see this county return to that sawtooth approach. That just was insane. In fact, it drove some of the, I think, demands for incorporations and other things because people saw that and said, how could you do that? Things got out of hand. We've done much, much better over the last 20 years, I'll say that.
Yeah, and I don't have an answer to you, to give you right now, as you probably are well aware. And I will just bring it back to this particular project. If, even if they do get an exception, this won't be creating sawtooths, as you know, because the corner will be okay. It would really be somebody a quarter-mile down the road doing just their frontage and not completing a.
I know. And we, there's going to be requests, they're going to be coming to not just me, if the other board members are saying, well, how come them and not us?
This won't be the last one under this current atmosphere, correct?
So have you thought about how you might have at least?
What's the answer?
Yeah, I know, Susan, that's why I posed a question. I don't want to get hung up on this project today. But it, we don't have a really good answer right now, except that we're going to blend those plans and come back to the board with a policy discussion.
And maybe we'll have to do that before this comes back in December, right? And have some report back at that point in time to what we need to do.
I don't want to have a lot of time today, I don't gather things on agenda. But it's not unimportant and to, you know, to Susan's question, okay? What is the answer? Maybe several answers. There may not be an easy answer, and it may be a variety of things. But I think particularly as we see, you know, this area beginning to develop. And Patrick, I share a lot of the Vineyard area. But, you know, this becomes an issue because other board members will be contacted about, you know, what we, what we're doing and how we're approaching this. And I just think that, you know, this begins to bring it to a head.
Right, and I mean, and the simple answer would be don't grant any exceptions. And that, that may not be, you know, supported here, so.
Well, because I think, again, you look at the reasonableness. It's when now we're actually seeing it on the ground. And so to your point, and I don't want to be unreasonable about it. In fact, I think what's being proposed probably fits pretty well. But it doesn't get to the larger issue, which is we're going to fall behind and DOT is going to be struggling. And this board will be struggling with it as we see more development along these major corridors. And so.
And maybe one of the answers is break these into smaller bite-sized chunks or something like that along the road. You know, something closer to the quarter-mile that we try to do.
Or have some fees to pay in that help us to do some of the fill-ins that at least keep us at some pace, maybe not keeping pace, but keep us some pace. Otherwise, I can see we're going to be heading for a potential lethal partial wreck on some of this, so.
I see it where I sit, too.
Okay, all right, so I don't have a chair. Maybe the best thing would be to get some report back. This is a general plan portion of the, where you're talking about the entirety of the project and to get back to our board. And I think it drives, you know, I know there's been a lot of good work been done around this. But this may be the catalyst for us having that broader discussion. So everybody understands here and, because I know I'm not going to be the only board member contacted about these coming, going forward. There's one in the pipeline right now.
Oh, I know, I know.
I know, you know, Matt. Okay.
Hopefully, maybe we can report back then.
Okay, all right, thank you, thanks, ma'am chair.
All right, I did want to point out a handful of other conditions as it relates to the convenience store that are in your attachment to. There is Condition 3 and 4 having to do with the hours of operation of both the convenience store, drive-through, service station, as well as car wash, limited car wash hours. So those are in Conditions 3 and 4. Condition 11 is the SEPTED landscaping condition. Condition 16 is all the zoning code standards. We reference them, that we have put in the zoning code. And I had mentioned those that are on a recent service station. There's over a page of development standards in the zoning codes as it relates to lighting and safety and signage and cameras, et cetera, that are in the zoning code. There's Condition Number 26 that has to do with the LED lighting, ensuring adequate lighting. And then Condition 86 and 87 have to do with the healthy foods requirements. So those are, in addition to the logical segments and Park District 1's, a number of other conditions that I wanted to point out.
I have a question on Condition Number 3.
Yes.
It says the sale of alcohol should be limited to those hours permitted by the California Department of ABC. Doesn't say, that's a new one on me. Usually, we refer to our local requirements.
Typically, yeah, those, those conditions you'll see in the PCN letter are the ones that the sheriff is asking for the state to put on. And then we have business license conditions. So we don't normally put as a use permit condition, the alcohol hours.
Well, I'm uncomfortable having California Department ABC in here. I have more, something more like subject to the sheriff's standard letter of conditions.
Okay, but again, the sheriff's standard letter conditions are applied by ABC. Only the state can regulate the hours of alcohol. So, but we can, we can refer to the, to the sheriff's letter. But again, the sheriff is asking ABC to apply those conditions.
Well, I still think there ought to be a connection.
Okay.
You know, how we feel about ABC.
I totally understand wanting to cut off. I don't think we're legally allowed to limit the hours.
I'll work with Leon. We could include some language along the lines of, as indicated by the letter of public convenience and necessity, or something like that.
That's what I'm after, yeah.
So that someone knows to go look at that.
Yeah, 20 years from now, somebody's.
Then there's something else out there to look at.
A cross-reference, perfect, okay, we can work on that. Any other questions on conditions?
Don't see any.
All right, so our environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration. There's an MMRP. This will be, they are planning on participating through the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. There is a water resources approved drainage study with onsite flood storage. We've already, there is, in addition to what we've talked about with the logical segments, there are a variety of other transportation conditions. And we had some comment letters on the mitigated, mitigated NIGDEC, and those are addressed. So the Vineyard CPAC met on October 3rd. They did have public testimony. So there has been members of the public commenting on this project with concerns about traffic, with concerns about having a convenience store, some concerns about alcohol sales and lighting. So the CPAC did comment that commercial, they felt commercial for the entire site was appropriate. They felt it was a location, an appropriate location for a convenience store and the other uses. They were concerned about a request for 24 operations, and they preferred a closing time of 10:00 p.m. And they did vote 3 to 2 to recommend approval of the entitlements. Planning Commission met on September 10th. They recommended approval 5 to 0 to the board with findings and conditions.
Thank you.
So the recommended actions today are to open and close the public hearing, to take staff recommended actions 1 and 2 related to the mitigated NIGDEC and MMRP, to take tentative actions on 4 through 8, although it sounds like we may be looking at some conditions. So you can take tentative action, but we may end up reopening that at your next hearing to talk about some of the conditions. We are asking for a continuance to December 11th. And we would be cleaning up some numbering and coding of the conditions. And then we would defer action on the general plan resolution until we've heard the Castleman item.
Can I jump in for a second? I would not recommend that the board open and close the public hearing because this matter will be continued to another meeting and then you'll have to reopen the public hearing. I don't know why we would do that.
Do you want me to open the public hearing?
I don't think it's necessary.
Or just not refer to it at all?
I wouldn't refer to it at all.
Okay.
Because we know it's coming back.
Okay.
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 Natoli?
Yeah, Leon, so this discussion about the interface on the parcels, are we going to have that today? Or you're saying, well, this board office can have it with you. But and we'll hear from the applicant representative, anybody else who is here on this item. But discussion, and again, if this is a, you know, intervening use. I know we've allowed, at least in one case, at the corner of Elk Grove Florin and Calvine, where we had a commercial use up against the residential property that ultimately will develop as something else. But allowed for a wood fence that was built, you know, around that because that wasn't the full development of the site. But it provided the screening, at least initially, and didn't require the, you know, the engagement of the full, because there was a cross-access that was required at some point. So again, I don't know, you know, just based upon my questions here earlier, give some thought to that. But I, but I would just say that as part of, you know, what comes back to us December 11th on this tentative parcel map, that, you know, not to have that triggered, you know, each and every one of those, somewhere along the line, very early, I would say that, you know, that full block wall needs to get built. And I don't want something that's going to be a canvas for graffiti. Nonetheless, I think that, you know, from the standpoint of reflecting what needs to be done out there, just to have that built in increments along the way. Then you leave a lot of openings between the ag rez and the, and the commercial property, assuming the rezon's approved. So I'd like to have us take a look at that. And then I just wanted to ask on the conditions. So we're going to have different hours for lots of different things there. They're asking for, and you're recommending for a 24-hour use on the, on the gas station and convenience market. The affiliated restaurant, whatever it might be, fast food or otherwise, that would be no limitations at all, so it could be 24. Car wash would be from 8 to 8.
Yes.
And the PCN, when that would come before us, it would be recommending from, what, from 8 to?
10:00 p.m. cutoff, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
So allow for, and so that's, and we'll see that at the subsequent hearing.
Yes.
So it'll be at 10:00 p.m. on that.
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's all I have right now, thanks.
So I mean, with regard to the wall,
Yes.
I think it would be good to hear from the applicant.
Sure.
And I think what I took from your comments is you would like us to come back with an option to trigger the masonry wall much earlier, potentially as part of the construction of the convenience, of the gas station and convenience store. I mean, it's either then or, or in segments. So if you don't want it in segments, then we need to give you an option of a condition that would trigger it earlier.
Well, and again, the logic to that being that you have it all in ownership currently. Maybe it's going to be retained in one ownership. But, you know, again, that's not, when you divide a property, you can sell those commercial parcels as long as you meet all the other conditions. You can sell them to five different owners if you choose to, so. And that puts it in a very different perspective, so, okay, thanks.
Well, if I'm not going to open and close a public hearing, then we're looking for a motion.
Oh, we.
I think we want to hear from the applicant.
They swore up there, but I don't have any requests to speak. So we plan to speak?
I can't, I mean, we can't.
Probably a good idea.
All right, if there's no comments, then from the applicant, okay.
We're going to address it now or at 11:00, however you would like.
11:00, come back, man.
Okay, so then there's no other speakers on this, including the applicant. We're taking up the general plan portion today.
We want you to take recommended actions 1 and 2 to determine that the environmental analysis is adequate and complete and to adopt the MMRP. And then you have the option of taking tentative actions on items 4 through 8, knowing that we probably will end up reopening that and discussing them again. So I don't know if it's even worth taking tentative action.
Well, if we're going to come back on 11th and hear from the applicant, I'm not going, I'm not prepared to take actions on those until they have a chance to speak. And if anybody else wants to weigh in, and you have some staff analysis around some of the things we asked about, so.
So we can defer the tentative action.
Yeah.
And just adopt 1 and 2.
We'll continue, yeah, the remainder, remaining items will be continued to December 11th.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, all right, well then, you know, with that, we're just basically, we're adopting the environmental document as a mitigating negative declaration and adopting the mitigation monitoring reporting requirement program. And then all the other actions that are put off until.
Except for the general plan amendment that'll come back after we're done with the next project.
Right.
Right, yes.
Okay, all right, well, that would.
Put off till December 11th, just to finish that file.
Yeah, right, you're right, yes, correct, December 11th. And at which time the PCN, I guess, catches up with this, so. Okay, all right, well, I would move the two aforementioned items, the environmental document and the mitigation monitoring reporting program. And then.
Second, please vote.
Yeah, continued reminder to December 11th.
Unanimous vote.
And if I could, ma'am chair, just as a part of that, then I would anticipate a report back on the, this transportation issue. It's bigger than just this project, but I think, you have it all figured, we need to have that discussion.
I think there's a lot of stuff you've given us we need to go through, what the record, what question have been posed. Work with the clerk and report back on all those items to you on the 11th. So you have a comprehensive package.
Next item, please.
Item 4 is the Castleman South General Plan Amendment, Vineyard Community Plan Amendment, Florin Vineyard Community Plan Amendment, rezon, tentative subdivision map, and a design review for properties located at the west of Castleman Road and Elk Grove Florin Road in the intersection of the Vineyard Community. And the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
All right, this one also has a PowerPoint. As referenced, it is on Castleman Road, west of Elk Grove Florin, in the Vineyard Community. It's a 19-acre site. The request is a general plan amendment, an amendment to the Vineyard Community Plan, an amendment to the Florin Vineyard Community Plan, a rezon, tentative subdivision map, and design review. This is an aerial focused in on the property boundary. Here are some project photos. The general plan amendment is requesting to go from ag rez 1 to low-density residential. At the general plan level, Vineyard Community Plan level, the Florin Vineyard Community Plan would go from AR-1 to RD-3 to 5. And the rezon would be for RD-5, from A-10 to RD-5. So this is a residential project. It's a tentative subdivision map dividing 19 acres into 90 single-family lots. There are three landscape lots. There are two access points onto Castleman Road and a future access to the east and a future access to the south. Along Castleman Road, there would be improvements, including a sound wall. And there, it would be an off-site detention basin. be an off-site detention basin. It does have a general grid pattern. The access points align with adjacent access points across Castleman Road. They have planned for future access to the east and to the south with buildable areas identified on the map, and it does, the lots all conform to RD5 standards. Within the Florin Vineyard Community Plan, it did analyze a land use alternative with future RD5 designation, although that designation was not applied at the time. The surrounding areas to the north have begun to develop at the RD5 densities. The site design is a grid pattern in compliance with the countywide design guidelines. These are public streets, nothing is gated. The existing homes would remain until the project actually commences. There is an off-site detention basin planned, and the Vineyard CPAC recommended approval on a five to zero vote. It has a mitigated NIG deck along with an MMRP. There were some comment letters that we have addressed here. Planning Commission also recommends approval on a five to zero vote with the findings and conditions listed in your staff report. So we are recommending that you adopt the mitigated negative declaration, the MMRP. You'll take action on the general, the overall general plan resolution for both items and continue the rezone and subsequent documents, also the December 11th hearing. And that concludes the staff presentation. Supervisor Natoli, you had asked about the Florin Vineyard Gap Fee Program, and so we have checked in with county engineering, and they are actively working on that, and that is expected to be back before your board in early 2019, and there is a condition 77 that speaks to the fact that the development cannot actually move forward without that implementation program.
So this project, then, if it's granted the approvals, until that infrastructure finance plan is adopted, it cannot move forward?
Yes, but that is expected in a relatively timely manner, so...
And just one related question, then, there's the Florin Vineyard Gap, we were talking about North Vineyard Station, a specific plan a moment ago, and then we had the Vineyard Springs piece that was complementary to all of that as well. So will that Florin Vineyard Gap bring that coordinated and hybrid approach to, one, obviously, those logical segments, but then who pays for what, and so we're not double paying for projects? Obviously, South Watt, South Watt, Elk Grove Florin is a major component of all that, and, you know, the Bradshaw Quarter is becoming congested, and those east-west improvements need to be made, Florin, Gerber and such, but, so are you anticipating with that 2019 presentation to the board that that will bring us the full complement of those plans, the approach that will provide the coordinated approach?
I'm going to have to defer to Kamal to answer that detailed question.
Kamal Atwal with the Special Districts County Engineering. We're currently doing the NEXUS study, it's with the financial consultant, so North Vineyard Station is getting updated, and Florin Vineyard Gap is being implemented, so both NEXUS studies are concurrently going on, and we expect to have it in front of the board by March.
And so you'll bring in both of those, Kamal?
Yes.
Okay, so Vineyard Springs ties into that, too?
Vineyard Springs will be updated after that.
Okay.
We haven't started working on Vineyard Spring, Vineyard Fee Program.
Because they all had apportements of these projects that I referenced earlier, and, you know, and Vineyard Springs is largely in...
Yes.
Supervisor Kennedy's district now, but, I mean, all of those had fee components to them, but...
Yeah, the overlap has been, already been accounted for in each program.
It has been, it's been accounted for, okay, all right, very good. So that, and that's what we'll see, but this project, then, couldn't move forward until that's been...
Yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any further questions? Kennedy?
Move staff recommendation?
Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
And that included the general plan resolution, right?
Okay.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
So we need a motion for that, or...
Did you just state for the record that that included the general plan amendment?
Yeah, so that was already written in here?
Correct.
Correct?
It is written in here.
Okay, all right.
So we adopted the general plan resolution for both projects with that motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, item five is your nominations. That was continued from yesterday, the Veterans Advisory Commission, Mr. Natoli.
Yes, I would nominate Dale Regglesworth.
Now you're on to the county executive comments.
No comments.
Supervisor comments?
Okay, is there any further business for the board?
Yes, it does.
Meeting's adjourned.